All right, everyone. It is six thirty. If everyone's standing, join me. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation of your God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, uh, Dr. Dyer, if you would call the role for councilman, we can do the role for this one thing.
Mr. Conley.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Harrison.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Terry.
Here.
And for the Personal Finance Committee, Ms. Yana. Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
Ms. Todd.
Oh, you don't get double credit, by the way. Uh, so first off, for anyone that's watching at home, uh, this is a bit of a different. This is our normal work session, uh, time. However, this is a joint committee meeting with the personnel and finance. Uh, due to that fact, uh, all the members of the Personal Finance Committee are, are going to be invited to speak, uh, throughout the meeting. So it's not going to be our normal three-minute time limit. Uh, same with Mr. Conley. Uh, we're going to waive all of those for these evenings so that they, it's their meeting as much as ours. So everyone will be able to speak. So if you guys, uh, don't see a time or anything, that's the reason why. Um, what we brought the group up, I guess we should do the other things. Uh, motion to approve the work session agenda?
So.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison. Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yeah.
Mr. Lewis.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, and I'll just knock out our minutes real quick. And then, uh, I would also accept a motion to approve the minutes from the Council of Regular Meeting on January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five?
Proof of February twenty-seventh. Second.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yeah.
Mr. Lewis.
Yeah.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. UJ.
Yes.
You guys can do your formalities.
Yeah, and I'll go ahead and, um, if any changes from anyone, go ahead and move to approve the agenda for February fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Ms. Yana.
Yeah.
Mr. Lewis.
Yeah.
Ms. Hall.
Yeah.
Ms. Todd.
Yeah.
Um, I need to, anyone have a, um, last minute? So I'll go ahead and move to approve one minute from November eighteen, twenty twenty-four.
Ms. Yana.
Yeah.
Mr. Lewis.
Yeah.
Ms. Hall.
Yeah.
Ms. Todd.
Yes.
Awesome. So, uh, before we get started, I turn over, uh, to the administration and, um, we got this group together because, uh, what we found is that by the time we usually get to the budget time, like, it's a lot of things are already set in motion for the following year. And we have great conversations, but we don't often get time to kind of take a step back and say, okay, how do we plan things out a little longer term? Um, and things of the nature of like, how do we finance those longer-term decisions? How do we prioritize those longer-term decisions? What are on that? Uh, we'd love to hear from everyone, especially the Personal Finance Group. Um, I don't think there's any set, like, priorities that we already have. I think it's more for, if I can speak a little bit for the council, uh, just see how it works, see how the evolution goes, gather a list. And we have really been striving, uh, hard over the last few years to kind of stop being reactive and being more proactive, stop kind of making decisions ad hoc and more kind of set a plan and then set that forth vision and follow it. And this goes right into that, which is, uh, long-term plan, long-term vision. And, uh, that's what we're here for. Um, and outside of that, thank everyone for coming and giving up your Wednesday nights and all of your, as always, thank you guys for volunteering. And thank you guys for being a part of the, uh, the village. You guys are the best. So thank you. Um, Ms. Love, I'm gonna turn over to you.
Yes, good evening, council and members of the Personal Finance Committee. Thank you for being here. Um, I know most of you know Mr. Conley of Rock Mill Financial, but for members of the public, a little bit of background. Mr. Conley serves as our, the village's municipal finance advisor. Rock Mill's an independent firm with extensive government experience, whose goal is to work in the village's best financial interest. Uh, Mr. Conley's helped us recently with an investment policy, um, and a general fund balance policy. This is kind of the next step to that. Mr. Conley has been working closely with, uh, Ms. Renee Sonnet on the input for this tool. He's developed a five-year general fund forecast tool for us. It's been a goal of council and administration to have some better data behind our budgeting process as well as our planning for the future. And as we are poised to grow, um, we want to make sure we do it responsibly. This includes ensuring we have a sustainable, balanced budget each year. Uh, but without the data, we may be too conservative or too, um, not conservative, which leads to its own set of problems. And we might, we don't want to be playing catch-up in the future. So this tool, the goal is to help us better predict the weather. Um, it's not set in stone. It's not a budget. It's just a forecast to run specific scenarios to see how it could impact our general fund balance. Like the weather forecast, it's subject to endless variables, but, um, we can at least better plan. Tonight, the tool is just focusing on the general fund. Uh, Mr. Conley has our capital improvement plan for the next five years. And after the discussions tonight, to make sure we're moving in the right path, we'll apply this tool to that plan as well. That's the hope. And then in the future, um, we'll be checking in on this tool every six months or so, um, which would align with kind of the goal setting in the beginning of the year and then the budget process kickoff in a year. With that, I'm gonna pass it to Mr. Conley.
Great. Good evening. It's good to see everyone again. Happy New Year. I haven't seen you since the clock turnover. Uh, I appreciate the introduction. Haley was, uh, interesting. Sometimes when I work in places where I've been for a while and then there's been a turnover in council members or board members, everyone's like, I really don't know David's background. Like, who is he? Where did he come from? Well, I started working with governments in nineteen eighty-eight, helping them plan for financial situations, finance school buildings. I've worked for airports, colleges, universities, cities, school districts, townships, you name it. Um, since then, I think I've worked with about four hundred governments in the state. So I have a unique insight into pretty much everything that you have to deal with from a financial perspective. That's, I, I stopped there. Outside of finance, you can forget about it. Uh, so what, that allows me to really be able to work well with administrations to understand what, what they're tackling, um, take that, put it into something that's useful so that boards and councils can also understand. And then even one step further and help communities sort of understand. My, sort of my magic talent, my superpower is taking numbers and having them make sense to people that don't spend their days dealing with numbers. So that's, that's what I do. Um, my involvement with Plain City started some, probably ten years ago, is that about right? And, uh, ten years ago, either by design or not, Plain City was basically saying, help us, you know, help us figure out what to do next because we sort of feel like there's a strange vibe in the air that things might be changing here. And we don't want to be caught off-guard. And so we started with some real simple things first and then, uh, began to plan a little bit and evolve a host of things around how you're structured as a city, village, village, city. Uh, and I, and I turn it around all the time. Uh, and that has led us to where we are today. And that's like just another step in the process of being, uh, really proactive around financial matters. Uh, the key is making sure that you're taxing your residents properly and that from those taxes, you're using them the most efficient way that you can use them to get, to get your community sort of the, the biggest bang for the buck, if you will. And also putting yourself in a position, because I've worked with a lot of places that bring me in after they didn't make the decisions. And then you, and then they're playing catch-up, which is really painful from a tax perspective. So, um, so my responsibility is to help you stay ahead of that curve, uh, to make some decisions today that still might be a little painful, but far less painful than they'll be if you don't do what you need to do now and you play catch-up five years from now. Part of that planning process is being able to predict kind of in general where your financial position will be next year, two years from now, five years from now, and then staying on top of that so that there aren't any surprises. And if there's a change, you at least have some, you know, some radar that says, hey, there's, there's a blip on the screen here that we need to be aware of so we can keep our eye on it. Uh, so in our last meeting, we talked about, uh, developing what will ultimately be a tax, an overall taxation policy. A taxation policy is a policy that explains to your community why you tax them the way that you do, what the objectives are, uh, that you want to have those taxes reflect, um, basically a fair and equitable approach to providing services to the community based on its mix. So, you know, when I say mix, older taxpayers versus younger taxpayers, higher income taxpayers versus lower income taxpayers, businesses versus individuals, all of those things come into play when you're building a tax system. So your tax policy should reflect, this is our approach to how we would like to tax the community. This is our approach to how we use incentives with business development to help us support how we tax the community. And then lastly, how are we putting those taxes to use? And that's what gets us here to this, to this wonderful place. Um, you know, I, so when I first started working with you guys, I mean, all the financials were done on the, you know, ledger paper and, you know, Ray would sit there with her, her shade, you know, that green shade thing on, and she would be writing out things on a piece of paper. And there's been a lot of change over time into, um, investment in technology, investment into specific approaches to, uh, financial management. And all of that, yeah, has, has made getting to this point easier, but it still wasn't without a fair amount of work. That, uh, so I think the last three months, we've been spending a lot of time, um, condensing, if you will, hundreds of line items into groupings so that we could make a fairly usable five-year forecast. Um, this, just so you know, this is, congratulations, this is your first ever five-year forecast. Uh, the city is, villages never have one before. Uh, just so you know, the state mandates that school districts have these, but there is no such mandate for municipalities or townships. So you would be one of just a few cities around the villages around the state to actually go down this road. But there's a reason that the state mandates them for school districts, and that's school districts at one point were having a lot of financial problems. And they wanted to try to fix that so that they could predict where they were going. It makes a lot of sense for, for other governments as well. Um, so our first step was to, um, begin to go through the line items that you have. This is solely for your general fund. As we evolve, we'll actually start to develop these for other funds as well. But this is your primary operating fund. So we felt like this is the most important one. Um, we went through a process of trying to make sure we could fully understand each of the many line items that you have from a, from a expenditure perspective and from a revenue perspective, and make sure they're being identified properly and categorized properly. And then putting them into basically bigger categories that will make sense long-term. So that we got through that process. Then we painstakingly went through every line item and said, and I said, what's this? Why did you do it that way? And will you continue to do it that way? And, and because once I'm finished with this, this is all on your administrators to handle in the future. I don't come back every year and ask those questions. Every year, it's on them to go back through every line item and ask those questions so that this thing can be as good as it can possibly be at the end of the day. Um, it, I can tell you, it's a lot of fun once it's all done because you put the numbers in, but you don't see the output until the last number is in. And then you're holding your breath, hoping that the output is black, not red. And so we're putting in all the numbers and then, you know, we're sitting, I remember the meeting, and I scroll up and I'm like, oh, thank God, the numbers are all black. And so what we, what you're looking at right now, um, before I go through every line item, is that very bottom line, the second to bottom line, it says available ending balance. From a management, a, a, a council management perspective, um, one of the key objectives is to make sure that you remain solid financially. Uh, you know, it's the old thing, if you're on an airplane and the plane depressurizes and the oxygen mask comes down and it says, put the, you know, put the mask on your child before you put it on yourself. Well, that's because they don't want you to die before you put, save your kid. Well, this, this ending balance is sort of that. It tells you right off the bat, are we gonna have trouble or not? And it gives you time to respond so that, uh, you don't have to, you know, you don't have to panic at the last minute. So as you begin to look at this document in the future, go to that bottom line first and say, okay, we're looking good. There's another line on the very bottom that says minimum ending balance. So that minimum ending balance is sort of the, if you're getting close to that number, you, we need to do some things to get that number, get that number higher. That's kind of your, your rainy day fund balance, meaning based on how we've operated in the past. And you will remember that very, very detailed spreadsheet I put up with all the numbers that said, you need to have about nine hundred thousand dollars in your general fund. Um, that's your rainy day number that you need to keep to stay, you know, who knows when the next recession's gonna come around. But you, if you're below that number and you have a bad year, you know, you could, you could really fudge yourself trying to make cuts. So at the very outset, uh, the goal is to just look at that bottom line and make sure you're, you're good to go. Uh, the second thing, just through a process, uh, I have recommended to your administration that every six months, they update this document. Uh, now, once you finish this growth cycle that you're in, they don't necessarily have to do it every six months, but you're sort of in a period of time where things are changing so rapidly that it makes a lot of sense to get a, get an update every six months. So you'll be seeing this updated. Now, it will not necessarily track the budget, right? This is not a budget tool per se. This is really a long-term planning, long-term vision, kind of a, okay, we're, you know, we're all right. But it's, it's with a lot of work going into it to make sure that, you know, that it looks, uh, that we look pretty good in the future. Um, so with that said, first, before I get into the line item stuff, any thoughts or questions about what I've said so far?
I'm guessing you're to get to this, but why is the income tax the one percent and not the one and a half?
That came from a spreadsheet.
The half is, the half is tracked separately. It's just for capital stuff, which is what we'll get into the next round of projects.
Perfect. So that the half is over there.
Yes.
And the general, this is just the general, the one percent and the half. So we would not expect any capital expenditures to come out of this money. Perfect. Thank you.
With the exception for transfers. At some point.
Just in our operating accounts.
Right. That, to the extent you would be transferring money from the general fund to capital, but, uh, we've adjusted this where you wouldn't be necessarily making capital purchases in the future out of the general fund. Uh, you just set it up as a transfer.
Well, thank you.
And move it across.
Perfect.
Uh, so one of the challenges to any forecast is predicting where you're going in the future. And, you know, it's sort of like, I have a magic eight ball machine. Are we gonna do better or are we gonna do worse? Um, without any doubt at all, if you just had a glance, look at that first sec, set of numbers at the top, um, your income tax is the big dog. I mean, the income tax is leading the pack. Uh, and that will be the case for a long time until we discuss ways to diversify your revenue. And that, that's going to be part of our next segment, segment. And that is recognizing weaknesses in your financial structure. Um, but with the vast majority of your revenues tied to one single revenue source, at some point in the future, that's a risk factor. And, uh, being subject to something that could be impacted both by economic changes and legislative changes in the future. So no concerns today, but just, just know we need to, and this number is going to continue to become a very large part of your total revenue mix. So we'll need to talk about it. Um, we have a choice of picking how much we think that tax will grow over time. The income taxes typically grow for two reasons. The first is a change in the earnings of people that move, that live in the community, uh, as well as the number of people living in the community. So you right now in a position where you've got two things going for you. We have people moving into the community that who are, who are moving in that earn a higher income than people that are here. And so that's driving population growth and it's also drive, driving higher incomes. So we're getting a multiplier effect for the new residents. But even for the residents that you have here that have been here for a while, there's also been a notable increase in the earnings of those residents. So it's adding to what we're seeing as a pretty strong bump in, uh, in income tax receipts to the, to the, uh, village, one excuse, city, to the village. Uh, one other feature there is that the city did, um, was proactive a few years back, brought income tax collections in-house, uh, that sped up the collection process and the efficiency of the collections. I think that we've seen pretty significant improvements since John started.
Yeah, and better, I mean, better collections, like accurate collections.
More accurate collections. Uh, it's, it's been really beneficial. That investment has made a lot of sense. I'll have commentary along the way, by the way, about, um, operational aspects of financial stability. Uh, you all are, are growing the weight of that growth, just sort of imagining legs starting to buckle. Um, you have to do what you need to do to fortify the foundation of the operating structure of the village in the future. So don't neglect positions. We, at the last meeting that I attended, there was discussion about staffing. Um, this is the time to really think about staffing, uh, because you don't want the weight of growth to, to, to put you in a position where you're trying to catch up again. You want to, you want to be, stay ahead of that. But we've seen a lot of, um, a lot of growth in the income tax. Uh, Renee, over the last three years, what were the, the average increases?
In twenty-two, it increased by sixteen percent. Twenty-three, increased by sixteen percent. And then twenty-four by eleven.
What I, what I would love to see in the next iteration of this is some of the major assumptions kind of across the bottom in order. So maybe, um, number of households or income tax filers like listed out like year by year to kind of see what assumptions are baked into these, uh, or maybe number of residents or number of households. Also on the expense side, like number of head counts. So we can see where it's wage increases versus investment in head counts. So if we just have, you know, just those kind of statistical assumptions that go in onto this, and, and I know that this is a forecast looking forward, but it's probably relevant to maybe see one year back to see what we went from twenty-three to twenty-four, see if the growth is more aggressive, more pessimistic, or right in line with other items. So just some added items. Cause I think it'd be nice if I just looked down and said, okay, that's the number of households we're assuming. Do I think that number is aggressive or pessimistic? This is where the head count's getting added, things of that nature. Just like as a, so you don't need to go to the second page, just right across the bottom.
Yeah, the air point, Derek and Jason, like, hey, when water comes up forty-two, and water's gonna come up, you know, forty-two, then that's gonna, you know, blow up development. We have people talking all the time waiting on that, right? So are the, is that, is that sub baked into the four or five-year plan or, it is, those kind of development expansions or Creekview, right? Creekview come online in, in five years, in the, in the Commerce Park, where we're gonna see, we expect to see a huge jump in personal income, you know, tax from, from the commercial side of things. Is that, is that kind of stuff, that kind of assumption in there?
Yeah, philosophically, the, and every government has their, their own views of how to do that. But typically, with a five-year forecast, you don't count it until it exists. Um, and you wait till you, you close the year to say, okay, so back to your point, you look at a three-year trend, you see, you know, we closed twenty-four compared to twenty-three, and we know that X, Y, Z project is actually in, people are actually occupying the houses.
Yeah.
Then you try to quantify that impact based on the prior year's number.
Fair. Um, yeah, cause I, I don't think, I don't think we're suggesting to change the methodology just to lay out the assumptions that are laid out.
Does it actually require to do assumptions? So that means it's a, mine's like a sixteen-page area.
Right. I don't need sixteen pages.
Saying that the income tax is like this amount. I'm being conservative based on this, this, and I'm sure this won't lead to it.
Yeah, yeah.
You just have to lay it out so that people reading it get a little bit different picture. But then you always keep in mind, it is, it is a magic, well, like a magic ball. You know, we, something COVID happened and we were prepared to, so it's just, I think it's, it's game, yeah.
Yeah.
But I do think the assumptions help. Um, you'll see, I think that's the venue there. Again, I'm gonna keep that in mind. But the assumption's really clear of the picture of why we're saying, well, saying, mine, mine does two years of actual year in this year.
Right, right. Yeah. So the next verse, so keep in mind, this is, this is a, it's still preliminary. And so your comments are all well taken. The final, when you get to the point where you've got a full-born, you know, full-born baby, uh, you'll have notes that go along. So just like a school district five-year forecast, there'll be a page with notes and assumptions. Most, most school districts don't have methodology described in their five-year forecast notes. They just describe, and they might talk about state funding and things like that. Um, so this can be, this particular product, this particular initiative can be very simple or can be very complicated. And that, that process has to go, has to track along with the way that your staffing is structured. And, you know, so there's a, you know, there's an evolution that occurs over time as your, your staffing is more robust and is able to do a lot more. I think that this thing becomes a lot more fancy.
Yeah, I, I, again, I don't, I don't think anyone is saying sixteen-page number. I think just what is going into it, you know, I do a lot of forecasting and budgeting and I call it false precision. We can be really precise, but way inaccurate. So I think as long as we're accurate in our approach and we understand the approach, if that says that Creekview comes online this year and it's the next year, so be it. We just want to know, like, okay, this doesn't include Creekview. So, okay, got it. So two years from now, I should be asking that question of, okay, should we be layering that in? So that's all I think.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think that, um, as you all go down the road, any and everything, the questions that you ask should be able to be answered, you know? And, uh, what's important is that you express what you're expressing right now so that staff knows these are the kind of things that you would like to know as you, as you, you know, as this becomes a, you know, a toddler and then an adolescent and then a full, you know, full-grown adult. So, um, so that's really the, the point today. This is, this is your baby, right? This is just, just rolling out. This is not it yet to be what it will be in the future, much like the village is not what it will be at some point. Um, so to the question about income tax growth, um, we looked at the historical growth rates and had some, you know, had some dialogue about what would be a good number for now. And, uh, we kicked around three percent growth, five percent growth. We ultimately landed on seven percent, which is significantly below where you have been. Uh, but it's not as conservative as five percent. I think for the budget, maybe you all were looking at three, three percent. Um, you know, and this is, again, this is intended to give you a little more realism in terms of how things should go. But every year, that number can, can change, including at every six-month interval when, when we're looking at it. Because so those, the way you're changing, you know, these housing developments coming online, how many people are coming in, what their incomes look like, seven percent might end up looking low six months into, into the forecast as we go down the road. So we just kind of ran that out of the seven percent. I won't call it conservative, but it's definitely more conservative than the last several years. And, you know, given the number of house rooftops that you're seeing compared to the last three years, you know, it could be, could be significantly greater. But, um, as long as you're not seeing red at the bottom, you know, it's not a bad way to sort of, uh, process the whole thing. Uh, property tax is just, you know, it's nice to have. It's not a significant number, uh, as it is today. Our local government fund is pretty consistent over the years. Don't imagine that that number would be going up a great deal. Uh, your refuse contract is in here. It's also down in the expenditure. Uh, yeah, we have that. So that becomes kind of a wash every year, uh, as it goes through the system. But it does, uh, raise the question of discussing those types of services in the future as you look at it. Um, your construction inspection fees, that's the other large line item that is also a line item that comes out on the expenditure side. You'll notice that construction inspections fees are on the revenue side a lot higher than they are on the expenditure side. That, so this is a cash basis. It's not intended really to be a pool. Uh, these, so the, the revenue actually ends up having to be paid back, uh, through billing, but the billing isn't, is delayed to the following year. So you're, in essence, you owe money that hasn't been reflected, uh, in the forecast. But if you look down to the third bottom line, the third line from the bottom, you'll see less encumbrances. Basically, that's the difference between the revenue part of the, uh, uh, inspection fees and the expenditure part of the inspection fee. And that, the sole objective is to make sure that money is out of the general fund, that you don't count it to spend it because you owe it out, uh, to someone. But that's pretty much the largest, um, expenditure that has to be treated, uh, in that regard. So overall, the revenues are pretty straightforward. We do know that investment earnings will likely be, you know, greater than this number because you've changed your investment strategies going forward. But for now, we just left those on a conservative basis until everything gets. And so everything gets replaced from an investment management perspective, and then we can actually track and see how well we're doing. But that's kind of the, the revenue side is usually pretty easy. The income tax, you can be wrong on everything else, but that income tax is the is the magic. That thing drives the entire, you know, sustainability of the of the village. Expenditures took a lot more work. One nice thing about the model now is that we're able to kind of play with hiring people. So you can put in, you know, FTEs and see what the impact is on the forecast. And that's something that you haven't been able to really do in the past. So when the question comes up, can we afford to hire an extra person or two people or whatever based on their income? But their salary, you can put it in into the model, and then it factors it into the into the spreadsheet. So this particular one shows us, I think we're adding one and a half people in twenty-six? Twenty-five, twenty-five. Just again, just to see how we would look by adding adding that staffing overall. But again, the nice thing is that now we can we can get answers very quickly as to can we afford to put one more person?
That's non-police, though, right? Because the police would be. We already used that. We already used that one.
I did notice that Dale was looking at me. So we, you know, we spent time just kind of working on that, trying to make sure that that look at, obviously, retirement benefits, supplies and materials, our contracted services. Again, as things go along, so you're spending a lot of money right now that five, seven, eight years from now, you won't need to spend. If, you know, as the community starts to get through this sort of growth stage. So there's going to be some expenditures that are going up pretty rapidly. But as you get out, things, I think, will taper off a little bit. But for now, you'll see kind of a, you know, a growth pattern going through here. We've got our community and economic development line items. You'll notice that capital outlay drops dramatically from last year. And from this point forward, that should be a pretty low number. Because the goal is to deal with capital down in that last line that says transfers out. And so we're able to very easily identify what the capital needs are. How much do we need to fund as support from the general fund? Put it in that transfer out number to see what the impact is on on the bottom line. And I think the one item for twenty-five was that we built in here. Was it the?
It was the hundred thousand dollars. Same acquisition, which was budgeted for twenty-five, but we're just going to transfer it out.
So that that's in there for for this year. So basically, you know, this is, you know, it's it's intended to be simple. And, you know, with, it didn't feel like you wanted to see a hundred and twenty-five line items of, you know, postage and and things like that. And then ultimately, again, this will be accompanied with with notes and with with, you know, critical items that support reasons for a seven percent income tax increase or a five percent income tax increase. And it should provide for you some guidance as to where you're going. All in all, I think pretty comfortably, you know, the the balances, you know, are, you can see the the numbers are are going down just a tad over time, but I believe we're dealing with some relatively conservative income tax numbers. But even as they do go down, we're not quite hitting that minimum fund balance target. And, you know, I think we've got lots of time to really measure what we might need to do in the future if there is a downturn in the income tax. But I don't see any concerns right off the bat in that this would have been that window. Okay. All right, Renee, do you guys have anything else you want to add to this?
Very helpful.
Yeah, this is great. Thank you.
And the nice, you know, the nice part, the other part that you don't necessarily see your all the simplicity of being able to figure things out quickly, which is which is another thing that's nice. So now we can very quickly go in, add, you know, add things, deduct things, and see what the overall impact is literally in minutes. And that's a that's a nice feature as well. All right. Well, I appreciate the time. And our next meeting will be the notes and some of the other things. And then we'll start the conversation about how to approach the development of the tax policy, which will be a lot of fun.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess my only question before you leave is, a year ago, I think, we did the bond and everything about, and our rating was top, and we were really healthy. We did the general fund reserve. Since you've looked at this for now going out five years and looked at this, would you say that we are still in a healthy position? We would still be at the top on ratings that we had received? Like, is there any is there any change to that assessment that we were at? I think it was like.
You are, yeah, the village is in the strongest financial condition in your history.
You gotta look at the camera.
I'm glad I'm glad you brought this up. The you're you're in an incredibly sound financial condition. This, just having this tool is also a plus from the rating agency's perspective. So the rating agencies are aware and have said on more than one occasion that that management is almost as important as your financial condition because there are plenty of governments that at one point had good financial standing, but because of policies and and management, you know, ruined that. And this is a step in the direction of saying, we want to be careful. We want to make sure that we're in good financial shape. So this is a, this is an addition to already a great story. Our fund balances are stronger than they have been, you know, than I can ever think of for the village. And the other part of it, which is also nice, is that you've managed to keep your debt low. I mean, a lot of communities going through the kind of growth that you're seeing. One of the, one of the things that is an advantage there is that utilities would have been a bit of a challenge from a debt perspective. You would have had to have dealt with that by issuing a lot of bonds to to finance the improvements. But you're starting out with almost almost no debt, and that's that's admirable. And so the rating agencies would prefer for you to try to keep your debt as as low as possible for as long as possible. They realize at some point you have to borrow money to, you know, to manage the things that are going. But they don't want that to become so onerous that it makes it difficult for you to raise taxes to support operations. And so we've got a great story to tell on there. And then adding one more piece to the debt picture, we are moving down the road to restructure the swimming pool bonds and pay them off early. So that's an advantage as well. So not only do we have low debt, we're going to be able to pay off some of the debt that's outstanding sooner than expected. So that's also good news. It's gonna save taxpayers. Yes. Yeah. Yeah, so the, and since we're, since we're on, since we're online. So the pool was a voted bond issue. The voters approved the tax to pay for the swimming pool improvements. And they're paying property taxes on that particular transaction. So what we're doing is we're restructuring that bond, shortening it, shortening, shortening it by.
Seven years.
Seven years.
Yeah, seven years.
So the taxpayers won't have to pay the interest on that, on that portion of the debt that's outstanding. And a lot of that has to do with the growth that we're having in the community, the property growth. So we're able to, in a way, have people that are moving in support the taxes that have been made in the past by people who already lived here. So we're accelerating the payments to capture the value from those new homes and direct it to pay the debt off sooner. So that's another good news story. We're saving money where we can save money, when we, while we can do it. So that's the important part.
Now we can.
I'm gonna hang around for the capital conversation.
Yeah, we have not a lot to report tonight, but we have been working on the five-year plan, just sketching out everything, our projects that are underway that we will own, how they're being funded, as well as the projects we know are coming up the next couple of years because they're grant-funded. And then the wish lists of the next few years filled in the gaps, and then the bigger ones also. So just starting that with Mr. Conley and Mason on detailing out everything that we want to do and then trying to figure out, you know, how we finance that in the future, whether it's grant financed or not, or if we have to go to the ballot. Hopefully, that will allow council to make decisions such as the bigger issues and the timing-wise and with construction and what else we're accomplishing in the meantime. So don't have anything to present on that, but we do hope to build a similar tool to start allocating that revenue, making sure it's being spent responsibly and just lining up the next few years of projects.
How does the ideation work on those projects? Does it mostly come from staff? Does it come from the comprehensive plans? Is it, you know, I think, I think that's the exciting, fun part, right? So I don't know if there's a work session once we review that. Because it's great for us to help prioritize, but I think people want to be a part of like the ideation of like, I like where we are, what we're putting on the wishlist to start with. Obviously, you guys are take precedent because you guys know it a lot better. Like, how we get to that point, like buy Centennial Park and everything, things like that, where we prioritize that, what we do, so.
Yeah, I think it's a combination. A few things are from the plans, like buy Centennial Park was from the Uptown Master Plan. We have several sidewalk projects that come out of our council goals, where they make sense, connecting developments, the Safe Road to School Plan thing, a lot of projects came out of that. A few projects come out of land acquisitions. So we acquired the land, now we have to make the improvement, so it goes on there. That's pretty much, a little bit of it's leftover from previous projects, such as the Oatman storm sewer upgrade. Now we can start improving all the roads that lead into that. So that really summarizes everything.
So how does land acquisition, so we get approached with a with a parcel of land that we we all want to purchase. How does that get layered into a long-term capital plan? Is it money that's allocated each year to it? Is it out of the general fund? Is it funded through, you know, bond? How do we think about that? Because when we're approached with these items, they all are attractive, right? We have to make a decision on, is it fiscally responsible? Is this the right property? So just talk to me through like a little bit how that gets included in and how we allocate money out for those decisions to help support us when we we kind of know how deep our pockets are when these things come to us.
Yeah, this tool will help a lot with that, too, to see if we can, if something comes, it wasn't planned, but it's advantageous. We can kind of play with, we can put it in the tool, we can see where our balances might be at the end of the year, see if we're comfortable with that, or if we want to finance something, what the debt would look like over the next few years. We also have the new capital acquisition fund that we started this year, and we moved a hundred thousand dollars to that. So the goal is to build up that balance, so it's there if opportunities do come to us. We also have, you know, gotten great with the grant program. If property owners can wait, we can usually find a grant to attach to something. So a little bit of strategy as things change, obviously, just, I think this tool will really help us feel what our level of comfort is with making some of those decisions, though.
When we talk about utilizing that to finance, so issuing a bond or something from internally, is there restrictions on that? And maybe this is a question for you, which kind of that it has to be, I'm assuming it has to be discreet. It has to say, I'm doing it for this specific item? Or can we do it if a if a parcel comes up and I say, hey, I really want this, but it's a million dollars? I don't have a million dollars in the general fund. Are we able to issue debt to purchase that? Or does it have to be like we have long-term plans for it? How does that have to work out?
So you're able to issue debt, under Ohio law, you can issue debt for any any capital purpose or any item that has a life of five years or or more, which includes land, obviously. And so you're you're able to to issue that typically, the way it would work, anytime you issue debt, council would approve ordinance that specifies exactly what you're doing. And if there's multiple things, let's say there's land in a building, you would potentially have a ordinance just for the land financing and then one for the building financing. So it's it's very, very specific in terms of what you're issuing debt for. Ultimately, we combine these things together into a single financing. But at least the the paper trail keeps an individual track of what you're borrowing money for.
Perfect. Yeah, and that's why we're so concerned about keeping those ratings as high as possible as we make those decisions. And then when something, what would trigger the need for a voter, just an increase in taxes? If it's not, if it's not an increase in taxes, it's a council decision, it's an increase in taxes, it's a voting decision? Is that pretty, I know it's not cut and dry, but.
For the purposes of.
Of a bond issue. So you said that the pool's a voted issue. Is that a voted issue because it was specific tax that was just issuance of debt?
Yeah, property tax, that's my.
So so we're looking at pool feasibility study. If we decide to do that as a property tax levy, that would have to go to the voters. If we decided to do it internally, it would be a decision, internal decision.
Let me be a little more clear on that. So the purpose, you saw, under Ohio law, you you don't necessarily have to go to the voters for a swimming pool. You could do a, you could do a city-backed general obligation bond and do a bond issue to finance the swimming pool and pay it from your existing resources to the extent you had existing resource, resources to make the payment. But you all elected, in the case of the current bond issue, to give voters the offer, is it, you know, to give them the choice to vote on whether or not they wanted a swimming pool and whether or not they wanted to pay for it. So a voted bond issue only comes into play for a municipality largely, when you say specialty, specialty project like swimming pool that can be somewhat contentious in a community and give people the opportunity to decide whether or not they want to pay for one. But that you're not, you're not required to do that. That you could simply do a bond issue for a swimming pool or a rec center without putting it on the ballot. And part of the taxation policy sort of identifies how you would approach it, right, in the future when making the decision to do a non-essential improvement. Is, should you fund a non-essential improvement using, largely, your your money is coming from income taxes? So using an income tax to finance a swimming pool through a regular city, non-voted bond issue versus a police station, for example. And so, you know, you sort of, as you go down the road, that's a tax policy that you currently don't have in writing. And you have the, you have the authority to go either way with it. And some communities that have ample resources don't mind doing a swimming pool, using the city's existing operating revenue. Other communities like to put it on the ballot for their, you know, their communities to vote.
And with the acceleration of the payment, when does the pool, current pool bonds expire?
Twenty thirty-nine.
Okay, so that's with seven years off?
No, that's with the, if if in fact it is seven years, it'd be twenty thirty-two.
And one thought that we had is that we know there are some interests in improving the pool facilities and things like, things like that. It makes it easier to the extent that you all would like to make a significant investment in the pool facilities, go back to voters and say, okay, the tax is going away in thirty-two. If you would like to continue paying that tax, we can do some things.
If we're gonna do rapid levy, rapid levy in the twenty-eight would be more feasible than a thirty-two, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, there's, there are ways that you can, you could still capture the, you know, the changeover in taxes by carrying the debt short term, you know, on the city's ledger and then switch it over to a voted, a voted financing when the, when the actual existing bonds are paid off.
When is the follow scheduled? Before the budget?
Before the budget.
Thank you. As long as.
Yeah, I'd like to start the, have council buy on real capital, see if there's anything we should add, take away.
Personal finance? What are you talking, what are you talking about? You're gonna use a, you're just gonna show us the results. We're excited for you guys.
I think it's like you're not going anymore.
It took some time to kind of get back. It took some time to kind of get back.
Yeah. It's a little bit more of a business point than that yet.
Yep.
Are there any other tools that we are lacking that you can identify? Because you said like this will help with bond, with ratings and everything. Are there, is there anything else that we need to be adding? Policies?
I, so you're already way ahead of most communities your size, but that shouldn't stop you from doing more. One thing I would, that would be helpful, you know, so you don't need to issue a lot of debt right now, which might be a good time to begin to really learn about the different types of debt that are available to you. Because it is easy to get in a rush and do some things, and then after you do it, you go, oh geez, maybe we shouldn't have done it that way. But a debt policy, it's not a bad idea at some point. But, but again, all of this is, these aren't things that you, I should just walk in and say, here, here's your debt policy. These are things that you should sit down with me, learn what's available to you, the pros and cons of the different types of debt, and then make a conscious decision to say, okay, we're, you know, for example, I'm working in some communities in central Ohio that are now finally beginning to say, should we be using special assessment bonds to finance sidewalks, curbs, gutters, streetlights, alley improvements, things of that nature? And, you know, just to begin to build out their debt portfolio to specifically tackle certain problems that will ultimately be problems that you experience. But you won't have those for a while. It doesn't hurt to go through the process of really saying, okay, why wouldn't we consider doing that? So I think a debt policy would be the next, the next thing. And all of those fit underneath the broader umbrella of the taxation policy because debt, regardless of what type it is, has to be paid from your taxpayers. And you're going to them, collecting money and using it to pay it back. So the tax policy is the overriding thing, fund balances and debt and, you know, the, the capital plan all fall underneath that.
So I, I, I love it. I mean, we, we always talk about how we want, when decisions come to us, that we just turn and say, well, here's what we have laid out and decided, our economic development policies like that, and we can make it easy for all of us because I feel like as we continue to grow, you know, we've run into a lot of ad hoc decisions. So being ahead of it, it's probably worth even to go into that goals and objectives and just put in a couple bullet points underneath this capital plan that just says taxation plan, debt plan, don't worry, we'll do it this year.
Right, yeah, I mean, so economic development is another, another area where sooner or later, you'll be hearing conversations about doing TIF bonds, like you have these TIF revenues.
Sooner.
Coming in and whether or not you should, you should entertain, you know, using TIF revenues to finance improvements as well. So I mean, that, those are all things that, you know, in the next three, four years, you're going to say, well. The, the best part of all of this, and whether it's formal policy or just guidelines, is that as you all change over time, new people coming in don't have to recreate the wheel, right? There's, there's going to be something in writing where they can come in and say, what are we supposed to do when a developer says we want you to build, you know, X, Y, Z? Oh, let's turn to the, to the TIF portion of the debt policy. And there it is, right there in black and white. So that's the other advantage to do it.
I like policies.
Yeah, we like.
And just so, David is a part of every TIF conversation that we have with developers.
Oh, great.
And we also have another team on the backside to review to all the TIF agreements, and he's part of that as well, so.
Makes me sleep easier.
Yes.
Or a motion, a motion to adjourn, yeah? I would mo, I would accept a motion to adjourn the council and finance maybe? Unless you guys have other items? No?
Second.
Yeah, you can do both. Yeah, there you go. All favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right. Thanks so much, guys.